All right, I'd like to call this February 21st, 2013 Cookville City Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson?
Present.
Councilman Woodford?
Present.
Mayor Swallows?
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps?
Here.
Councilman Albright?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have additions, subtractions to the agenda?
No changes. Do what? Okay, she's just changing the wording on item six. She's not really adding or subtracting.
There you go. Chairman? Okay, so just change the wording on item six. We don't need to vote. To vote on the, on changing, do we?
Okay, so we need to vote on changing the agenda? Or do we need to?
Do we need to.
Do we?
Yeah, it's a change to the...
I move that we make the change to the agenda, the wording for item six. Is that what we want to do?
Yes. Second. All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Should we have made a motion?
May be a little hard to follow after.
Approve the motion as amended.
We'll get to it, though.
Okay.
Now, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on February the 7th, 2013. Motion for approval on the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item three. Consider on second and final reading, ordinance 130102, amendment to the zoning code establishing a new zoning district entitled RAO, Redevelopment Area Overlay. Sponsors, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the proposed RAO districts intended to provide a mechanism to encourage redevelopment and revitalization in areas in need of such. This ordinance has been, or amendment's been approved by the planning commissions recommended by the planning department. We've received no comments since first reading. However, we have received our first application, which is pending or subject to the approval of this ordinance.
Wow.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments about the district? Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item four, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 130204, to establish an updated occupational safety and health program plan for the city of Cookville. Sponsors, Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this ordinance establishes an updated occupational safety and health program plan for the city of Cookville. We've received a request from Tennessee OSHA to submit an updated plan. It was up, last updated in 2003. There have been no comments, questions, or changes since first reading, and I would request your approval. We'd like to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. All right, on to new business. Excuse me. Item five, consider approval of change order for the Highlands Business Park project. Sponsors, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, while building the road through the business park, we encountered some conditions that has caused us to change the way we intended to construct the road. And I'd like to go over some of the items that are, are causing the cost of the project to increase. The first item is, and the big item, which is adding approximately $140,000 to the project is the graded solid rock. On the approaches to the bridge over Kane Creek, as well as on the approaches with the box culvert, we encountered soil conditions that did not allow us to use the field dirt we intended to, to construct the road. We just cannot get compaction by using dirt. We had two options, one undercut all the bad dirt that was not suitable, replace it with rock, and then come back up with dirt, or we could just leave the unsuitable soil in place and bridge over it with the graded solid rock, which was the cheaper of the two alternatives. And that's what we did. We had a geotechnical representative on site that agreed with our assessment on what to do, and that's what we ended up doing. You can see the differences in quantities. It was quite a bit. It was roughly around the, both sides of the Kane Creek Bridge is about 1,000 feet. We had to do that, and about 850 feet around the box culvert. In doing that, we did get to zero out the borrow excavation. Since we used that rock, we did not have to use any of the borrow field dirt. So that did cut out 133,000, but we did have to use the rock, which didn't help any. These are the boring samples, pages from where we did this. That's before you get to the bridge, the west approach. It shows a bore, it's about 450 or 500 feet before the bridge. The next slide shows the, on the east side of the bridge, the next bore. We had met with a geotechnical firm, asking why they did not discover this soil when they did their report in the field. They did their, the borings in August of '09 and June of 2010. The, the main problem we had with that, the groundwater table was so high when we tried to dig out the soil, it was just, the soil was saturated, so that's one of the reasons we couldn't get good compaction. The borings did not show any groundwater, except normal creek elevation at the bridge, and then the next bores they did, they didn't have any groundwater. Only thing that we've been able to come up with, so they did the bores in August of '09 and June of 2010, we checked the rainfall amounts in '07 and '08. I checked them with the National Weather Service, as well as the data they collected at the wastewater treatment plant. Both of those years were significantly, significantly below normal. I think '07 was actually, was 20 inches below normal. So that's the only explanation I can come up with, is why they didn't encounter groundwater, because we had the dry weather before, and it didn't have a chance to recharge. But when we were doing this work, was in, over the winter of 2011, 2012, which was a wet year, and it didn't, and it was also in the wintertime, which didn't help anything. But that's the only reason I come up with why they did not encounter that. That's a picture showing us putting the solid rock, graded solid rock. This is around the box culverts. So we did not strip any of the existing soil out. We just put the rock directly over the existing ground to bridge over it. It's averaged about four and a half to five foot deep, and it was anywhere from 110 to 115 foot wide, which covered the whole footprint of the road there. That's an example where the dump trucks were backing up the place to rock, and you can see how the, how the ruts are there. And that's why when you put, if you try to put dirt on that, it would just, you could not get compaction on a lift of dirt. You can see what it was doing. There's another example of the same thing. The next item, which added approximately 260,000 to it, was undercutting. And this was the same site situation, but when the, the grade of the road was getting close to the existing grade, we could not use that large rock, because it would protrude up into the subgrade. So in these instances, we did have to dig out unsuitable soil, replace it with rock back up to the original ground, and then we would put either rock, or depending where we were, or dirt on top of that. We also had to do this in some of the sanitary sewer locations, because the soil there in the sewer trenches was bad. It would not support the pipe, so we had to go several feet deeper than the, than the ditches than what we intended to, and that was included in this quantity. That's one of the places we had to do some undercutting. That was around the box culverts on the west end of the project. After we undercut it, we would put geotextile fabric to separate the two materials, and that's putting rock on top of that to getting it up to subgrade. That was an area we had to undercut where the sanitary sewer was going. And all that water is not rainwater, that's groundwater that was coming up when they dug the trench. That's how much water was in the ground. The next item, which added about $150,000 to the project, was on the east end of the project in the median. Over the winter of 2011, 2012, a sinkhole developed in the median. The way we had to repair that was dig it out, try to find the hole in the bedrock where the water was draining to, and then fill that up with rock. We used riprap, because we needed a rock that had spaces between the rocks, so the water could still get down to the hole and drain out. We didn't use the graded solid rock like we did on the other ones, because there's too many smaller rocks that would clog it up. The riprap is a graded rock, so it's a more uniform size, so that's why we chose to do that. And it was still deep, cheaper than the undercut price. That's why we went with that. This was when we first discovered, well, it was a little bit after, but that's what it looked like before we did any excavation. That was the storm sewer in the median, and you can see how the pipe is separated, and how the dirt has fallen out from under it, going into the sinkhole. This was in digging out, and it got to be quite a big hole before we could find where the water was going. That's the final, you see the rock on the right there, that's where the hole was finally discovered. We placed geot, fabric on top of that to keep the, all the material out of the hole, and then started filling it back with rock. And you can see the workers there on the left, how, how big a hole that is. The next item, the plans had included some erosion control plans, and before we start this, the work, we had to get a construction permit from Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation before we could begin work. They wanted us to add some silt fence and different other erosion control measures, so we had to change the plan some. The additions in cost here was what we added to the existing plans in order to obtain a permit. The erosion control blanket, there were notes on the plans that indicated the erosion control blanket was placed on all slopes 3 to 1 or greater, and that's what we did. After discussing it with engineers, they had intended us to, just to do that on the median, and use seeding everywhere else. We didn't do that. We went ahead with the erosion control mat. The cost, the difference in cost, because we're not going to be using the seeding as much, will, it will nearly take care of that, but I still think we would have, we're better off to do this, because the rainy season, we were doing all this in. If we were just seeded it, it would have probably washed it off several times, and to stay in compliance with our construction permit, we would have, it would have probably cost us as much to do the seeding, instead of just using the erosion control blanket the one time. That's an example of the erosion control blanket on a 3 to 1 slope. And it's, you can see the grass is coming up through it, and it's stabilized the bank. Those banks in the distance is another example. You can see how green they are. That was all where the blankets were placed. The next item is the curb and gutter along the edge of the roads. The bid quantity for that amount was 543 yards. We've completed the, there may be just a little bit of curb and gutter left, but we've put in 1,400 cubic yards. And that was just a mistake on the bid quantity. When you calculate it out, that's just, there was just not enough yards of concrete on the bid to cover all that was, what was put in. So that was, best way you can tell that was just a mistake when they were, the bid quantities were calculated. Sidewalks, the way they were designed was to place the concrete directly on some compacted dirt. Our experience with the dirt being so poor out there, we decided it would be best for the long-term use of the sidewalks, so we wouldn't maybe have some breaking up, was to put some stone base under them. That was not in the bids at all. We added that. That added nearly $68,000 to the, the cost of the project. The sanitary sewer is still being installed. It seems there could be some discrepancies in the, the elevations on the, the profiles for the sanitary sewer. Some seem to be showing that they're having us install it deeper than what is on the plans. The deeper you install the sewer, the higher the price is for the, for each one. With all the sewers installed, we will, our surveyor will go out with a representative for the contractor and measure the depth of all the sewers and the length of pipes to verify all the depths. In a worst-case scenario, if, if what they're saying is, is correct on all that, it'll, it could add up to $290,000. The ones we've checked so far are matching the plans pretty good, so I think there'll be an adjustment on that, but till we get out there and actually shoot every one of those with our surveyor, we, I won't have the exact number of that. There is a retainage on every pay request, so there's, there's still plenty of money that we have not paid the contractor that would cover this. Also, as far as the sanitary sewer, the lift station was relocated, if you remember, because of some property acquisitions and problems. The cost of, some of the equipment that went in the lift station went up during that time, because the contractor did not order the materials. That added $139,000 to the price of the lift station. Some of that will get back, because we moved it up to the north closer to the road, which will eliminate quite a bit of 30-inch sewer line. So that's going to be pretty much, I think, a wash on that one. The amount we saved on the 30-inch line will pretty much pay for that extra cost for the lift station. The sewer line runs out of the business park, goes east on Lee Seminary Roads, and then goes north on Burdice Falls Road. Most of that is a forest main until it gets to, close to Burdice Falls Road, then it changes to a gravity sewer. There's some resonance along that road that we thought we should go ahead while we were building the road, add some lateral services to service them, so we added that to the contract afterwards. That added approximately $37,000 to that. We've, we've installed all those. I think there's two left to, to finish that up. After we bid the project, the contractor thought that they could save us some money on changing the design of the bridge. The plans had a five-span precast arch bridge. Contractor hired an engineer to design a, just a traditional two-span bridge, pre-stress beams. That's a picture of the bridge. It has, the railing is the only thing really we like. You can see it's a good-looking bridge, and that, that saved a little over $550,000 by, by changing to that type of bridge. Waterline crossing at Kane Creek, if you remember, there was a pond there that you could see from the interstate. We were, we drained that pond. There's a creek that fed that pond, so we were required to reestablish that creek, and it would, it was going, it goes right under the Brick Kane Creek Bridge, but also there's a waterline crossing there. When we bid the plans and they designed the plans, that creek restoration had not been designed yet. Another firm did that, so they did not include that in the plan, so we had to add that as a, after the fact, to, to do that. And that was about $30,000 of extra, of the extra footage of creek crossings. We had four hydrants also that, or the attached, the connections to the main waterline were put in before they had a lot of the, the dirt, field dirt in, because, so they wouldn't have to re-trench it after they had their compacted dirt in. When they got all the slopes in, we had some conflicts with guardrail and slopes where the, the fire hydrants would not have been as usable as they, they should have been. So we used an 8-inch iron, ductile iron pipe connected to where they had the fire hydrants located and, and ran a line parallel to the road to a more usable spot for the fire hydrants. That was an extra, about $10,000 to do that at those four locations. We've tried to conservatively estimate what all this would add to the contract. Like I said, the sewer line changes. Until we get it actually done, we will know for sure, but I, we think $1,221,000 would cover all these changes. The original contract amount was $12,944,238.52. When you add that change order amount, the total contract amount now would be $14,165,238.52. And I would request your approval. Be glad to ask you any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I've got, if you don't mind, I've got some. Comments and questions. Ms. Brown, the Highlands Business Park, you know, has been a project that's been in the works for several years. As a matter of fact, probably a decade or more, starting with a land acquisition, the planning, now we get, now we're into the construction of it. Barge Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon were hired to do the engineering work on this. How many, Mr. Brown, how many different project managers have you had to deal with since this project began with Barge Wagner?
Well, during the design phase, we went through, I think it was three different ones.
Three different ones. Is this normal on the project?
Usually not, no. It's not normal.
So you've not experienced this with a engineering consulting firm before or since, have you?
No.
Okay. Okay. The reason I bring that up is I feel like this might have contributed to some of the differences in the bid and what they designed, and what they call an underestimation of quantity needed, such as for the curbs and gutters. The area in question, what they call unsuitable soil, was found at both approaches, east and west of the bridge. And the, from what you're saying in, in the letters from both the Barge Wagner and their subcontractor, they did the core drilling in August of '09 and June of 2010, dry periods, which we were probably in the midst of a drought or near severe drought situation. I wish they could have done something in the winter, you know, to balance it out. I don't know if that's normal or not normal, to do two different, you know, times of the year. I understand that possibly, because when you go out there and look at that terrain, it does look like it's a drain, drainage area from Kane Creek. My comments are going to be this, I'm disappointed that this has happened. There's no question about that. The only good thing about this situation is that it was discovered during the construction process, because I'm sure that if we had to go back and repair this after it was completed, the cost would be much more, be much greater than what it is right now. And that the city doesn't have to borrow money to correct this situation and the additional cost of this construction. I think what we need to learn from this, and not forget that this is an expensive lesson, the Highlands Business Park is about economic development, and I want us to stay focused on this and to continue to move forward. It's about creating jobs for Cookville. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Woodford. Anything, anybody else?
Mr. Brown, if you would bear with me just for a second, could you kind of go through the process of, of, I guess, how we select, first we select an engineer, and then the engineer bids out the construction phase of things? I think that might be, there might be a lot of confusion. People see, you know, change order, or the project going over, like this now, or whatever, and, and there's just a lot of confusion. I know it took me a while to understand how, how you decide on an engineering firm first, and then you tell them what you want to accomplish with your, and you, and you pick them based off of their qualifications. And, and, and history says, you know, this is a good, solid firm. And then they go and they bid out the project based off of what they think it takes, you know, how much concrete, and how much silt fence, or how much curb and gutter. Then they bid it out to the contractor. So could you just explain that just a little bit, so people will understand exactly how that works? Because it was new to me, you know. First time we had an overrun, I thought, that, you know, how in the world, you know? But it took me a while to understand exactly how that works.
What we did, we formed a committee to review proposals that were sent in. Well, first, we sent out requests for proposals from engineering firms. They sent them in. We formed a committee, developed a matrix of different items that we would all read the proposals and grade each one. Then we would hold them up, meet, see who was the highest one that scored. We would bring them in, talk to them, and see if we were comfortable with them. Then after that, we would negotiate a fee for the design service. If we agreed with that, then we would come to you for your approval. During the design phase, you know, there's back and forth, making sure their design of what we would like. When they finally get to the construction documents, when it is bid, it's a, this is a estimated quantity bid. They have blind items for everything they have to do. They have estimated quantity for it. When the contractor bids, he'll put a price for whatever the unit is for that quantity, and then you multiply the two together, and then you add them all up, and that's your bid. And those are just estimated quantities. Some things will be, you know, pretty good, like concrete. If you've got a certain shape, length, you should be able to figure that pretty good. Some things are a little, not quite as, as close, because in the field, when they're putting that in, like rocks, we have tickets. We know how many tons of rock they're putting in each time. We keep up with that, and that's how we'll know exactly when the job is done, how many tons of rock, or cubic yards of concrete that they've actually put in place. And that's what they're actually paying, what is actually in place. The ideal situation, all your estimated quantities are a little high, so when you get done with the job, it's, actual cost is really a little bit less than what the contract amount is. But if there's a mistake, or you run across things in the field that are different, then those unit quantities will go up, and that which causes your, your total cost to come up. Mostly, usually on an average contract, you'll have some that go over, some are under, and it kind of equals out.
Okay. I just wanted, so everybody could at least understand a little bit how it works. One thing I do want to say is, on the construction side of things, Highways Incorporated has done a phenomenal job. They, they saved us over a half a million dollars on this project. Maybe even, that was their recommendation, their idea.
That's correct. It was.
I mean, they came to us to save money. So I don't want anybody to confuse the issue here. They're a fine company, very well-respected. They did an excellent, phenomenal job.
None of the extra items that they did, they, none of it was done before they had approval from us. And it was, in the field, that was just the way to get a, the job we wanted at the end. This is what we thought we had to do to get a, to get a good job, good road that's going to last.
So I guess what I want to say is, is, you know, when you get in, hire an engineering firm, you hire them on their merit, on what they say they can do, or what they have done in the past. And, and there's 90% of the time, when you have projects like this, they're over or under. I mean, there's, there's, there are misses. There, there are, and that's, that's acceptable and understandable. But a $1.2 million miss is a big, big miss, when some of it is just math calculations. And that's, I just want to point that out, that that's what really, really bothers us. We understand that this is the cost to get this job done. We know that. We have to pay this amount to get this job done. But to miss it on the front end, as bad as someone did, that's what bothers us, and that's what bothers, should bother everybody. And to have no representation from that firm here to explain anything other than a phone call or a letter, is a little slap in the face to me personally, to the people I represent. And I'm probably going to hush right now before I say anything I don't need to. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Well, and...
Extremely disappointed.
Yeah, I think that is what we all feel, and, you know, there's no prediction about that sinkhole. There was no way to know that was going to happen until it happened, you know, and I think that anybody who's ever done any kind of construction knows that the best-laid plans, the best estimates are just that, plans and estimates. And when you get into the actual project, things come up, and when you're talking a lot of money, this is a big miss, but it's just a little hard to swallow.
It is. Yeah, and some of them are understandable.
Yeah. Sinkholes, definitely.
Yes.
We get the sinkhole.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just, I really can't add a whole lot to this. I just, I want, I, I too am frustrated, and I think, I think those that are watching and folks here in the audience can, can sense the palpable frustration that we have as council members here about this.
We get the sinkhole.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I really can't add a whole lot to this. I just, I want, I, I too am frustrated, and I think, I think those that are watching and folks here in the audience can, can sense the palpable frustration that we have as council members here about this. Because we, we are stewards, the stewards of the, of the public's money. Mr. Woodford, you, I completely agree with you. This is an investment in our future, so we, we continue to plow ahead, just like we would do with many things. It's going to, that is going to eventually pay off and pay off, pay off grandly, but it still doesn't negate the frustration we have. I guess the one of the things that I always do in my profession, if this, if, if something goes wrong, you know, I go back and ask questions. Could we have done, could we have done something better? And I kind of look at us as a council and an administration. Could we have, is there something that we missed that we could have done better to possibly avoid this? And I feel satisfied that, that our administrators that we have here in the city and the subcontractors and contractors that we hire, in order to, to find these things out, we've had our city manager and our city lawyer have had, made phone calls and had numerous conversations. I really wanted to be there, but I don't think, I think they planned on having it secretly without me there, because I think it would have, it wouldn't have went as well. And that aside, I, I am satisfied that our, that we did all we could, could in order to try to prevent, to prevent this. We're in some ways at the mercy of the, of the folks in the process of this, so, but as a council, when I look at this, could we have done anything different? I'm, I'm comfortable that we've done everything we can, but still frustrated.
Well, like we talked about at work session, it would have been nice to have known that this amount, it was going to be 1.2 million more, to be able to have it in the bond issues whenever we, whenever we did that. We, we did not, so now we are looking at it now. Highways Incorporated did a wonderful job. They're the ones that need to be paid. And so, that's, that's where we are right now. We just, we just need to go ahead. But it's, it's the principle of the thing.
Like Councilman Woodford said, we're just lucky we're in a spot that we can.
Take the money.
We can write a check.
That we got the money.
And, and that's, falls back to our administration and our department heads that we are in that spot.
Yeah.
To be able to do that. So, you know, there's, there's 100% confidence from this bench going out to the department heads and to the administration, so our frustration's not there, so.
No.
Anything else?
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. Item six, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 13205, amending the budget of the general and water quality control and economic, economic development funds of the city of Cookeville for 2013, 2014 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, in order to be able to help fund the change order you just approved, we're going to have to do a budget amendment from a couple of funds to move cash into our economic development fund. The economic development fund is where we've accounted for this entire project from day one. So, just real quick, the budget amendment from the general fund would be moving $1,375,000 to the economic development fund. In addition to that, there'd be an additional increase in expenditure to the water quality control fund of $225,000. That's for a line item inside the, the Highways bid for a sewer line that is extended underneath highway, or Interstate 40. And that sewer line is for sewer service north of the interstate, so that's $225,000 line item in that contract with Highways. So, that would be charged to the water sewer department. So, moving funds down to economic development fund, there would be $1,375,000 in cash that comes from the general fund that's moved to the economic development fund. I'm also with this budget amendment, just recognizing in terms of the budget, additional revenue, it's not, it's not more money from the county than we expected to get, but it's money we got this fiscal year as opposed to last fiscal year. I thought when we put the budget together, we would receive this money last year. We got it this fiscal year. So, I'm just going ahead and recognizing it now, but that's an additional $334,000 that's being recognized this year. So, that's a total increase in revenue for economic development of $1,709. The Highlands Business Park construction line item is a $2,858,311 increase in the budget. That $2,858 includes the change order you just approved. It also includes expenses that are occurring this fiscal year that I thought would probably have occurred last fiscal year, so just going ahead and recognizing that appropriation for this fiscal year. In addition, there was a, over what was budgeted this fiscal year for the Lee Seminary Road project, which is all part of this entire project, there's an additional $64,780. That's an increase in that appropriations for that line item. Again, that's just additional over this fiscal year than what I thought would happen last year. So, the total increase in expenditures for economic development fund is $2,923. Net of all this, that's going to decrease the economic development fund balance another $1,213,000. So, at the end of the fiscal year, the economic development fund will have approximately, approximately $125,000 fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Backing up to the general fund, it will have approximately $6.6 million fund balance after that transfer is made. And I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do you have a motion for approval?
Sub moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I've got a question. On the $225,000 from the water quality control, how come it just wasn't taken straight from the general fund, all of it?
The entire, $1,600,000 basically. That $225,000, that particular line item extends that sewer line underneath I-40 to serve, to provide sewer service north of the interstate. It essentially does not provide service to the business park itself, is my understanding.
This is something we were going to do at some point anyway, correct?
It's, my understanding is part of the overall master plan for the sewer department.
It's just that maybe Mr. Kelly wasn't expecting it, this.
Yes.
Was this, was this originally bid out with the rest of the sewer projects that are being done out at the park, though?
It was included in that, in that bid, that, that's under contract with Highways right now. It was included in that bid. It is a line item in that bid. It's a $225,000 line item. Yes, it is in that contract.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item seven, consider awarding bids for laptops. Police Department, sponsor is Major Mark Maxwell.
Mayor and council, we're requesting to purchase 11 Panasonic semi-rugged notebooks or laptops to be used in the police, in the police department's traffic and patrol division. We received two bids from the same company, Hired Technology Solutions. One of those bids met specs and one did not. One meeting specs was for $2,573 each, or for a total of $28,303. If you approve the purchase of these laptops, it'll be fully funded by three highway safety grants from the governor's highway safety office, and we're requesting your approval.
Thank you, Major Maxwell. Do you have a motion for approval?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
This is good news that this is being funded by somebody else other than us.
Yeah.
Thank you for getting that grant.
Yes, sir.
Governor, have any grants for the business park?
Of course.
We could ask him.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item eight, consider awarding bid for trucks. Sponsor, Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have budgeted and opened bids on a one-half-ton pickup truck and two one-ton extended cab trucks. The low bidder meeting specs on the half-ton pickup is Dodge of Columbia, $21,993. The, the bids on the two one-ton vehicles did not meet specifications, and we'd recommend rejecting those bids, and we are in the process of rebidding those.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do you have a motion for approval?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item nine, consider awarding bids for uniforms. Sponsor is Electric Department, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, we solicited an open bids on some uniform and work clothing. Items one through, one and seven, I would recommend perfect fit as a low bidder meeting specs. Item two, I would recommend Wesco as a low bidder meeting specs. Items three through six, plus eight, I would recommend UniFirst as the low bidder meeting specs. And recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sub moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. All right, this is the part of the meeting where you'd like to open the floor to any citizens or delegations that would like to come forward, say anything you'd like to speak, speak on, which asks that you keep it to three minutes if you can. State your name. That's about it. Anyone? Anything from the council? Nothing? No announcements?
No announcements. Well, father-daughter date nights this weekend, but those tickets sold out the minute they put it in the computer, so if you don't have your tickets, you can just stand outside and watch people go in and out.
I wonder when they're going to start having vendors out there selling hot dogs.
I think Tech's got a ballgame tonight, and I think the high school has a, hosting a regional Friday night, isn't it? So, and I think Tech also has another game Saturday night.
Saturday.
So, there's some sporting activities in Cookeville this weekend.
Anything else?
Is today your birthday?
Yes, today.
You're kidding? My birthday was Monday.
The best people are born in February.
I'll agree with them.
Yeah, there you go.
They're 39 again.
I'm at least 39. Let's not say we did.
Yeah, they pay me not the same.
Me too, Jim.
I'll do what they ask, it's their birthdays, so. All right, this meeting is adjourned.